Are there any announcements this evening? Councilmember Ferris.
Just a reminder, the National Day of Prayer is tomorrow on the courthouse lawn. At 6:30, everyone is welcome.
And I would add to that, in the unlikely event that there's a rain date, it'll also, it will be moved to the First United Methodist Church across the square. Counsel, or, excuse me, Mayor Proton Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two words of thanks tonight. First, thank you to our city clerk, Debs Wurtnevich, and the entire team for facilitating a flawless election. I'm always appreciative of the fine work that they do, and so many volunteer, more than an entire day's worth of work, to make sure that we have a smooth elections process here. So, thank you to our city clerk and to all those that volunteered for those responsibilities yesterday. I also want to say a word of thanks to all who came out and supported the first annual Mason Spring Swing Jazz Festival. We had a great time at Reiner Park on Saturday, and especially thanks to some of our core groups that support us, Arts Initiative Mason, the City of Mason, the Chamber of Commerce, and also the Reiner Park Rally Club. If they did not do all of their hard work in maintaining and keeping that park beautiful, then we wouldn't be able to have such nice events there. And finally, to the Rotary Club for just embracing the idea of having a great performance venue there. So, I hope that this is something that will continue, and future years, there's seemed to be a lot of interest, and we'll see where it goes. Thank you.
Are there any other announcements? Next item on the agenda is people from the floor. If there's anybody present that would like to speak to the council on anything other than the public hearing for the budget, or something that's on the agenda, please approach the podium, tell us your name and address. You have approximately three minutes.
My name is Jill Leach. I live at 955 West Columbia Street, across from Sycamore Park. I'm here about sidewalks out there. We've lived in Mason since 1969. We've really liked going to firebombs now. But the only way, I like to walk downtown, and the only way I can get there, I live on the corner of Corbin and Columbia, is to walk about an eighth of a mile on sidewalk and over the overpass without going across the border. But anyway, and I think it's dangerous. And I understand we are talking about sidewalks, and I'd just like to say that I really would like to see what happens. There's a lot of people with young children and lots of new housing developments. And I was just reading in the paper the other day about a woman who confesses to hitting someone on a bike and killing her because she was texting or something. And I thought, if I'm on that overpass, actually, the overpass was safer before it because there was a ledge. Now, there's nothing. And if I could hit on an overpass, I'm cemented. So, I would really like to strongly consider sidewalks from Corbin to Harvard, far out in Long Hill, because they are part of the city, and also doing something with that overpass. And I understand I have to look at that, but that still is a danger. I thank you for your time and your consideration, and yay, Mason.
Thank you, Mrs. Leach. At this point, the proposed budget does include the recommendation to complete that sidewalk project unless something changes during the public hearing or before it's adopted. But at this point, that'll be worked on with MDOT, but the sidewalk will be on either sides of the overpass as it is proposed. Thank you. Is there anybody else wishes to address the council? Chief?
Perry Minchell, 808 Cindy Street. I'm here on behalf of the public comment to thank City Mason and everybody who showed up to help support our events last Saturday, our pancake breakfast, and our home sale behind the station. As you know, the Fire Association has donated literally tens of thousands, if not well over $100,000 in equipment, and I give back to the city department, through our Fire Association. It's much appreciated, and I just wanted to do a public thank you and shout out to everybody who helped make the campaign successful.
Thank you, Chief. Did you have a record attendance by chance?
We had just under 600 pancake breakfasts.
Is there anybody else wishes to address the council? Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget. I'll now open the public hearing, and request that Mr. Colburn just give us a brief overview of what has transpired since our last budget workshop.
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, the budget is brought back to you with the adjustments that we talked about, and that is the mileage at 13.25 percent. We've taken from the menu of projects that we've discussed with the West Columbia Street sidewalk. We have finally gotten a communication back from MDOT. It's something they're willing to discuss with us. No determinations, of course. This is just the preliminary discussions, as there is quite a bit to this process when you're working with MDOT. We've had success in terms of meeting with the two supervisors of Viva and Aurelius Township in terms of it was a productive meeting. Chief Minchell, Eric Smith, and I met with the two supervisors, discussed the equipment, discussed the timelines that the city council were discussing, and laid out a plan in terms of getting them to understand some of the current expenditures as well as future expenditures with apparatuses. It ended up with what I've presented to you in terms of the detail of the report, that there will be supportive of that, and we can move forward quickly with one fire apparatus and follow it up with a second. And so, we do have their support in that sense. It will impact more than likely, and all this is dependent on how much the apparatuses come in for in terms of the amounts, and the size and length of the loan we would get from, say, a local bank in regard to how much it would impact their individual budgets. But we're estimating between $10,000 and $13,000 per year, somewhere in that range. One other aspect is that the current payments that we're paying were for $605,000, not for $750,000, which is estimated for two apparatuses. So, we made sure that they were aware of that as well. So, we did come back with you with this report and have their support in regard to proceeding forward with this plan.
Thank you, Mr.
Otherwise, it's pretty much as we've demonstrated before with the budget. It includes also the 13th police officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn. Also, for those in attendance, this is a result of two budget workshops that we held that were open to the public here at council chambers, and the next component required by law is this public hearing. And the fourth component will be held at the next council meeting where we will adopt a budget, likely this one or this one that may have been amended by that time. So, at this point, during this public hearing, I would invite anybody that would like to address the council regarding the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget to approach the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have approximately three minutes also.
My name is Russ Whipple, 322 Arthur Street. I actually have two things I want to address. The first one, I read through the original budget message on behalf of the Mesa Softball Association, which I believe you read there, to tell you that we are officially a private city fire organization. I'm asking you recently, reminding me that I didn't think that I got the program back. So, we are officially, that we're designated by the IRS, and so, pursuing fundraising activities and things, plans to help the softball field and parks. They're going to start starting to do a little expansion, but the reason is that we want to be able to do the good we can, and to bring the family here. The other reason I'm here is to ask the council to consider something in regards to the fire department. I am a member of the fire department. I've been there for over 25 years. We've done a lot of fire departments, and one of my jobs is to tell them to serve as a head engineer for a fire apparatus. So, I'm familiar with a different fire apparatus. And only your proposed budget, you've got intentions to purchase another truck, or officer crew, including the chief, obviously, that we've talked about since the time. What I wanted to propose is that to not stop there and buying a truck. While we need that truck, we need that tanker, but it only has a third, well, four years old. And the next one that would be replaced would be over 25 years old, and the chief tells, and that'd be a change from vehicles of 25 years old. That'd be about right. But the question has always been, in my 25 years on fire department, and when I was for that, what happens next? What happens in 10 years when the next fire truck is 25 years old? And the city always kind of asks to spend money to figure this out. I think it's time that the city should take some action to solve that problem. And what I'd like to propose, and this isn't new, I know several of these councilmembers have discussed this either with me or the chief, or just general concept over the years. The city currently manages a motor vehicle pool for just about every other piece of wheel equipment that the city owns, except the fire truck. And I think it's time that you develop a program similar to that for fire trucks. I'm not exactly, I'm clearly not steep in all the rules that might be applicable to a motor vehicle pool, strike a ton, or whatever. But it sure seems to me that it'd be very, very feasible to create something, along the lines of, for lack of better words, a line, or something, a sinking fund, whether it's a separate department within the, separate line item, or separate grouping within the fire department's budget, or if it's a separate department within the motor vehicle pool, but it should be fire apparatus only, and it should be managed by the chief. And in discussing this, going over this with the chief and the other officers, and looking at, you know, going out what it would take to get this thing started, I put together a spreadsheet that goes out from 2015 to 2045. And it lists all of our trucks, and they should be replaced, including the one we're planning to replace this next Tuesday, and looks at what would the payment be if we borrow all these trucks, and obviously, this is all today's dollars, replace them all on a schedule. And this assumes that we don't borrow anything outside, so we don't have to use self-fund. So, what I'd like to have the council consider is to take some seed money, we would have to be a liquid chunk, because fire trucks aren't cheap, pay essentially cash for these fire trucks, but then pay ourselves back to this fund on some interest rate on schedule, and build this fund up so that this money is there and available to purchase fire trucks on a regular basis. For example, by my chart here, and I know all these numbers can be adjusted based on different assumptions, and I'm sure that once Eric got a hold of this kind of an idea, he would pull up a bigger number, but this, I know, would work. It's $600,000 if we set aside to start. And you got a $350,000 tanker, and then the next year, about $450,000 pumper, and a $35,000 man truck, but that's also 15 years old. You'd have to leave a following. And the year after that, you buy a $100,000 wildfire ray. And the year after that, a $200,000 rehab squad vehicle. And then there's, there's a long line, you know, that's buying that 200,000. The point is, with that $600,000, borrow money from yourself at 3%, that fund never goes low. It always has money in it. If we have a situation where, hey, we know next year we want to buy a pumper, or we go to a trade show of some kind, and there's one sitting there on the floor, it's a demo, and the guy says, we really want to sell this thing, and it's really cheap, the money's there. We don't have to worry about, oh, gosh, the budget's all, we're not going to have to change it. The money's there to do it. And by borrowing it from ourselves, we can also, you can probably manage a interest rate. We can adjust the payments, if, you know, let's say, your budget's been $50,000, and the truck's on the cost of $210,000. We can just clean it. I just think this would be a better way to go, to make sure that our fire apparatus are placed on a regular schedule before they become a burden of stress for maintenance expenses, and to also keep the trucks, at least at some level, and 25 years is a long time in technology, but, you know, 30 years is even longer. So, the point of this would be to treat the fire trucks as like all the other rolling stock that the city owns, replace it on a schedule, and fund it. Now, the beauty of this right now, in my opinion, and when I look at the city's budget, is the city has the money to do this. We've got $2.7 million in fund balance, which is, I know these numbers have probably changed since I read the budget message, but it was 38% fund balance at the time. It's my understanding that the LDFA would be interested in contributing to purchasing additional fire trucks. So, I think it'd be easy to find the $600,000 without affecting the city's financial resources anyway. We can do it all from fund balance, or we split it from fund balance to LDFA. But I know in the past, that the, kind of, this kind of an idea up, is potentially to feed money upfront, and it's a lot, to get it started. Well, you're in a good position right now to do that, because you've got the money. I suspect there are other plans for some of that money, but I know that 38% is extremely healthy fund balance. And I know that you had to tell us now what you had last time, it was around 18%, but maybe it's not. If you're 38, dropping it to 30 is not going to be, I think, a good amount of good news. So, I wanted to come here today and propose that. Okay, missing on my notes. And, you know, I realize that I've lost some work coming down between now and the budget in a few months, two weeks, but I think you're probably not completely unique, but at least a opportune time. When the city's budget, when the city fires trucks, and you look at the schedule, like I said, if you get through the next four years, there's five or six years where a new truck will be built. And I think this is the, the one, though, I think the better way to speak about it is to treat it as a, as a, and we would ask, want to, do some consideration. I'd be happy to show my numbers, if you will, to anybody, but I'm pretty sure that Eric knows exactly what I'm talking about. He's very well versed in this, and I guess if there's a reason the council can't do it, I guess I appreciate hearing, and looking at this. And if you can, if you can go through the budget, please, I've got a really good deal for fire trucks. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. I can give you an update on some activities that happened before our budget workshops. The council and staff did meet earlier this year, very early this year, to identify some goals and objectives that were common to both the council and the staff, and some that weren't, that we made them, made common goals. We met later to prioritize those goals into something that was, that we could attempt to obtain. And this was one of them that was the consensus of the council, that this needed to be addressed on a long-time basis, replacing the fire apparatus. And although it appears that we were just doing two, that was essentially meant to be the start of a plan that we need to work out yet. So, I would like to see the information that you have, or if that's available at some point, and I imagine the rest of the council would too. But that, just want to let you know that that was the general consensus. We're just not there yet. We've gotten two trucks identified, and how, when we're going to get those, and how we're going to pay for them. And then the goal is to move forward in a continuation process, much like we did when you were on council, and we were working on the turnout gear, and that's been an ongoing thing that's addressed every year.
I appreciate that. We just want to, I want to be very clear on one thing. I don't, in the actions of a body like yourself, nothing is rare. Something has to be done, but this is close. Because if you go borrow $350,000 from the bank, you black yourself out of the paint into a possibility of...
Understood.
And next year, you're going to look at 400, some thousand dollars to go. And you're in the position right now to make this work very well. The lane it'll make it goes, I understand you got a lane, $7,000 payment right now, with trucks outstanding in the last two years.
Yes.
Again, it started now. When that rocks off, it's full of different, so I hope that the discussion's in the plan to do something. See, when I was on council, 16 years ago, this was probably the point, and it's gone into, we don't deserve to take it, take it.
Okay. And...
Can I go?
Okay. And also, to fill in a blank for you on a number, this proposed budget will take the fund, and as it's presented tonight, as you see, it takes the fund balance down to roughly 32%, give or take. So, we're still...
My idea would take it to that.
And lastly, congratulations on achieving the 501(c)(3) status. Are there any other comments on the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget? Well, thank you. At this point, I will close the public hearing. Oh.
I think the city clerk has a letter that we need.
I knew of that letter, and I apologize. I meant to bring that up. We are in receipt of a letter that I would like included in the public hearing. The author did request that it be read into the record, but I believe that we have a method to enter that into the record so that it is a matter of public record, and I will turn that over to the clerk.
Thank you. We have received a letter regarding the public hearing from Seth Waxman of 424 and 1/2 South Jefferson Street, number 3. And a couple of the things that he points out is applauding city council to make these budget meetings held here in council, and also broadcast. He's concerned about the request for a tax increase, and he feels that the surplus should be spent to enrich the community or be returned to the taxpayers, and he feels that the city fleet needs to be on a rotating schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point, officially, officially, the public hearing is closed. Again, my apologies. That takes us to item seven on the agenda, the consent agenda, consisting of the approval of the minutes from April 20th council meeting, and the approval of the bills. At this point, I entertain a motion to either approve that consent agenda or have something pulled off.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grosho.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
Motion's been made to, and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Under regular business, first item is a second reading of ordinance number 199, which proposes to amend the district use map. Mr. Colburn, would you like to invite Mr. Haywood to speak to this again, or?
Yes, sir. This is in regard to the adjustments for the Dart Bank. We have Mr. Haywood, our zoning and development director, who's here to speak to the issue.
Good evening. Before you, it was 1999, the, since the last, you know, the, you know, the, you know, the, 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 the,
We do have amendment language that we could introduce tonight. My question was, would it be in order to adopt this second revised ordinance as a substitute rather than going through the amendment process?
There's no requirement to specifically go through that, that's the whole point. In my opinion of the second reading, if there are some issues that can be recognized, brought to attention, you just provide a substitute ordinance.
Other questions for Mr. Haywood?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Droschek.
I move to consider ordinance number 199 as amended, read for the second time, and adopted.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to consider ordinance number 199 as amended, read for the second time, and adopted. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ordinance adopted, seven-zero. Item B is a resolution number 2015-19 honoring City of Mason public servants during Public Service Recognition Week. Mr. Colburn.
Honorable Mayor and council members, this was brought forward by one of the council members in regard to wanting to recognize, and we appreciate that thought, of the value that the citizens receive from the public servants of the City of Mason, and really all public servants, federal, state, and local as well. Mr. Brown and I discussed it and went ahead and proceeded forward with putting together this resolution that you have. There was an addition in the minutes, as you saw, with a resolution last month that was, we used eighteen, so we just changed the number to nineteen to update this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn. Councilmember Droschek.
I move that we approve resolution 2015-18. Doesn't have to be read, it's a resolution, right?
Read. Considered read.
All right, then I move that we consider it read.
I second the motion.
Motion's made and seconded to consider resolution number 2015-19 as considered as being read. Any discussion? All those in favor of resolution 2015-19 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution passes, seven-zero. Considered, thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have one to introduce?
Yes, I do. City Council Resolution number 2015-19, a resolution honoring City of Mason public servants during Public Service Recognition Week, introduced by Brown, seconded by Ferris.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Mayor Protem Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you to administration for including this in the agenda this week. I'm part of an organization called the American Society for Public Administration, and they're one of several national organizations that participate in Public Service Recognition Week. This is something that's celebrated at the national level as well as the local level. There are resolutions that have been passed in Congress. Federal branches of government do various activities to celebrate their employees, and so this year I wanted to make sure that we instituted this at some level here in the City of Mason. We can't say thank you enough to the work that is done day in and day out by our city employees, even though sentiments were expressed eloquently in the prayer this evening by Councilmember Clark. We hear a lot about what's going on with public safety, especially police, and even with fire, and so they're individuals that not only come in the city hall each day and put in a good day's work and more, but also individuals in our community that put their lives on the line to make Mason a great place to live, work, and raise a family, and they're individuals that volunteer their time to serve on our boards and our commissions. And so I think it's very appropriate that during this Public Service Recognition Week that we just pause as a council to express that thanks and appreciation to all those that serve our community, because serving in government, working for government, is ultimately a way to serve the public. And so I personally extend my thanks and appreciation and grateful that the council is considering this resolution tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any other comments? I echo those sentiments as well. The City of Mason employees do an outstanding job. They have for years, and I'm positive they will continue to do so. And it's more than just the frontline departments that you likely see in the limelight, such as public safety and DPW at times. There's an equal number of employees that work behind the scenes in offices that you don't see in the forefront that do equally outstanding work. And if there's... This is a group of employees, in my opinion, deserve this as much or more than any other group of employees I've had the pleasure to work with. If there's no other discussion on that, call for the vote on that. All those in favor of resolution number 2015-19 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Item C is a motion to request the right-of-way. Madam Clerk, would you like a few minutes to speak to this prior to some of the work that you've done behind the scenes with this and the application process?
Okay, sure. Okay, we got it? I pretty much got it covered under, on our report. It's covered on our report. Best Sellers wants to hold an event for Mother's Day and have a brunch served. There'll be two seedings, and they're asking for a, to serve liquor on that day from the Liquor Commission as well, so waiting to hear on that after this meeting. They need approval tonight before she can send that in. And also would like to have Goodby's Truck occupy the right-of-way, which is before, that's before you tonight, the request to allow them to use that space for this one-time event.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
And we have the applicant here to speak to us as well.
Yes, hi.
Hi, Jamie.
Jamie Robinson with Best Sellers Books &amp; Coffee and Extra. So this is 356 and 360 South Jefferson Street. We would like to be using the right-of-way on May tenth for the Mother's Day brunch in order for that, the food truck to park outside and be able to use their kitchen. We would have stanchions seating on the sidewalk only next to Best Sellers and Extra. They would have to come inside Best Sellers and exit through Extra to be outside on that licensed serving area, but the sidewalk would remain open, so there'll only be pedestrians going in front of that rope. So the way you order or ask for a special use license through Liquor Control is twelve, you can ask for twelve dates a year, a Class C license, and then you have to have permission to use the right-of-way. They also will charge you seventy dollars each time you want to do that unless you request them all at once, which I'm trying to request all my days today, that I could be able to send one payment to Liquor Control. The other one that would be different would be during the Sundried Music Fest. The streets are already closed. Our serving area would be bigger than remaining, making the sidewalk be bigger, you know, the sidewalk be a bigger seating area, which they said you have to approve all of them or whatever. They called me today, Liquor Control called today and said, you know, you need approval. And I see the measurings, and they were fine with everything, but they just need approval from you to do that. So one, two separate things. One's my approval to use the sidewalk, and one's the approval to have Goodby's use the parking area only for one special use event.
Thank you, Jamie.
That confused everybody.
No, we could ask...
You start bringing Liquor Control in, it's...
Does anybody have any questions for Jamie?
Just one easy one, which I'm assuming you've already done. Have you coordinated with Daily Scoop?
Yes, I did talk to them. They know that we're going to have a Sunday dinner, and she said, oh, that'll be great. We don't get busy till the after, later in the afternoon anyway, so they're, they're fine. I told them we'd probably be having outdoor seating. Yes.
Mayor Protem Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because the parking spaces in front of Best Sellers and Extra are slanted, do you have an idea of how many spaces would actually be used by the food truck?
It should be five.
Five?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry, I'm a little distracted. I did omit to explain that, that she is asking for part of the sidewalk. It's very similar to others that we've approved, where they have to have the front door roped in where the liquor, where any alcohol would be served. And so Jamie has figured out a way to allow the sidewalk to be opened by having, you know, that go just around her tables, which I thought was a good solution. I also admitted, omitted to say that the staff in discussion of this felt that it was very similar to the question before you, the week, the month before, meeting before, to occupy parking spaces and did not want to see a precedence set, also feeling that we were working on an ordinance to regulate that. So with that said, it's kind of left to you. It's very similar to what we've done as a one-day event with Bad Brewing when they have their events. They too have to block off and rope off from the door, their serving area, as required by the Liquor Commission. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One additional question for you, Jamie. The memorandum from the Police Department indicates that you were gracious in terms of working out a way that pedestrian traffic can continue to move freely. The one concern that they expressed outside of that was that vehicle traffic on South Jefferson would not be impeded by this. So my question to you is, I understand that the truck would probably be parked parallel to the curb...
Correct.
And so it would not be sticking out into oncoming traffic, but will anything else be done? Would you put some cones or anything out there just so that as the servers are, you know, moving in and around the truck, that it's kind of not impeding that area? Or did you have any additional plans for facilitating that?
Well, we would, we would park the truck and then put cones in the two adjacent ones, not using the handicap area at all. And then there may be one or two parking spaces left in front of the vault that won't be interfered with. But our idea is, is yes, to keep both, both traffic moving both ways, and generally, they would park across the street at the courthouse side to access. Sundays are not a huge volume of, you know, the courthouse isn't open, Hilliard Building's not open, so it's not a huge volume of traffic. Hopefully, it'll just be all of our parking, all of our eaters, partiers. So they'll, they'll get there.
And, and I just had it and lost it. Also, also with, with your parking, man, I just, I really lost that. So if I think of it, I'll ask you again, but thanks. Please excuse my absent-mindedness.
It'll come back. You're the least senior person on the ancient head of those moments.
Other questions? Councilmember Ferris?
Not really a question, but I think this is a wonderful use of the space, and anything that encourages people coming downtown, especially on Sunday, when, you know, I pass it on the way back from church, and it is so quiet. I don't think traffic will be any problem at all.
Good.
I believe we are for now. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Clark.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request of Jamie Robinson, the owner of Best Sellers, for use of riding way, the right-of-way in front of her businesses and the parking spaces as well.
Before that is seconded, I would like to raise, maybe it's a point of order, to direct the question to the city attorney. I had brought some material that I don't, I had some material that I don't have with me, but I had researched this prior, and in our, in our ordinances, it states that the only way the council can approve such a request is through a resolution, that a motion is not sufficient. Is that your take on it? And I apologize, I thought I had the, the chapter here to reference directly, but...
I can say that I'm not sufficiently schooled in this. It strikes me that, again, a motion is more of a procedural matter, and that the fact that it says motion, you can easily change this to call it a resolution, but a resolution is more of a policy statement, and that's basically what the council is doing here today. So the fact that it calls it as a motion, if we could amend it to say that move for a resolution to approve this, that would be quite satisfactory.
And along those lines, although I was attending a funeral at the last council meeting, I did study the video replay, and this very similar request was in front of the council, and a resolution was, was drafted to comply. And I commend Councilmember Droschek for his fast ink pen on that one.
Can I just ask someone to follow up on that, the procedural?
Yes. Mayor Protem Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To our city attorney, I know that occasionally, when it's a singular request for occupation of the right-of-way, such as the Lions Club, White Kane Drive or something, or weekend festivals, that typically the council has done those in the form of a motion for, for specific one-time events. Would, would that still set a precedent for this, where it could be done as a motion?
It surely can. Like I say, I think that this is not a material issue in the sense that it's clear, what's before the council today is a clear statement of intention and direction by the council to permit this event. If in the future we want to make things, establish some guidelines for staff when they're preparing these sorts of motions and/or resolutions, we can make that clear. But as I say, as a general proposition, motions are more procedural, but that's not fatal to this motion that's here today. If this is what the council has done in the past, then it's quite adequate, and it's clearly adequate for today's hearing as well.
Thank you for your take on that. My, my concerns just still remains that our code is quite specific, that it, it does state that the only way this authority can be granted to do retail in the right-of-way is by a resolution of the council. So with that said, I do realize there is a motion on the floor.
Second.
And the motion's been seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Clark.
I'll be supporting this request because I believe that with all due respect to staff, I think that the request before us at the last meeting was entirely different. This is a one-time event. It's a special event. It's no different than Brian Rassdale when he closes off in front of his business, and the last, I think the last two years, they haven't even come before council because they've come between council meetings and he had administrative approval. It's no different than the chamber that comes before us, well, they don't even come before us anymore, but they used to, and gave us a laundry list of everything that they wanted to do over the course of the year, and we approved it under special events. Sundried Music Festival is the same thing, and we've been doing business this way for as long as I've been sitting in this chair. So I look at this as a, as a special event, a one, maybe a one-time or an annual event. It's no different than those that we have granted approval to in the past, so I'll be supporting it.
Mayor Protem Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's no secret that we had a lengthy discussion about how to move forward with food trucks at our last meeting. It was a very vibrant, a very instructive discussion, and out of that discussion, we did direct staff to move forward with constructing a, an ordinance or a framework for an ordinance that we could then look at and pursue in the future. That being said, when I saw this request in the packet tonight, I immediately thought, what a great way to pilot whether or not a food truck could work in Mason. Last meeting, we had sort of a blanket request for a longer time period, not only longer time period during the day, but also throughout the year, and as Councilmember Clark pointed out, this is, this is a one-time deal. This is a special event. It is similar to other right-of-way grants that we've, that we have approved, and I think that looking at how this, how this goes, which I think will be very successful, it's a great idea, but I think that from this, we will be able to look at how it occurred, how traffic flowed, both vehicular and pedestrian, what the response of the community was, what the response of the businesses were, and from that, we will have a lot of intelligence on how to craft a good working ordinance for the city regarding food trunks, food trucks. So I definitely see this as a positive thing, and I thank the applicant for bringing this to our attention and having the foresight, and I will be supporting it as well, and I think it's a great Mother's Day gift to the community.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Clark.
I would caution the Mayor Protem that I don't think we can lump these two requests together. They're apples and oranges. The request from the last meeting was a daily, a daily disruption in the downtown area, or a daily permission to use city right-of-way every single day. This is a one-time event that's happening on a Sunday, which is the slowest part of the week for the downtown area. The demands for parking, those kinds of things, aren't as great, so I don't think that, we can certainly wish that Best Sellers has good response, but I don't think that I'm going to use... I don't think that I'm going to use this particular event as any kind of template or anything else for what we may be considering as a more permanent setup for down the road.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Drosia.
I'm just going to say that I too will support this. I feel that we should have supported the motion last week, but that's behind us now, so I'm in support.
I'll chime in on this one, since I didn't have the opportunity last week. I did see the outcome, 5-1 against allowing the use of the right-of-way for commercial retail. And city staff ultimately was directed to begin working on a process for an ordinance that would work for both our longstanding brick-and-mortar businesses that would be competing, or the food truck would be competing with. And as I understand, in the two weeks it's transpired, that process has started, but it's nowhere close to being something we can use tonight. I invite Mr. Colburn to speak on that if he wishes, but again, my understanding is it's in infant stages right now, and there's a lot of work yet to be done before we see an ordinance that we can consider. I understand the food truck and their impatience to expand their horizons a little bit, but I also have to consider the longevity of the businesses that have been here around the square and consider on their behalf as well. I have difficulty supporting this one. I'm going to have to not support it, even though it's a one-time event. Sympathize with the request, and I believe that we will be working out something that will be an equitable solution for all involved, that will work in the best interest as much as possible for the two different approaches to providing food. So with that said, if there's any other comments, maybe? If not, all those in favor of the motion to approve the applicant's request for the special event, one-time event, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. I think, can we do a roll call? I might have heard three.
Yes, we can. Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Bruno?
No.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Drosia?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferris?
Yes.
Councilmember Mulvaney?
No.
Mayor Walz?
No.
The ayes have it.
Motion passes for three. Item D on the agenda is discussion, providing us an update, third update, on well number nine progression. Mr. Colburn.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, there's been a lot of work done in regard to this well. And as you know, we've come to you a couple of times to inform you in regard to the issues that we've run into at the 270-foot level, in terms of collapsing of the shell at that depth. We've progressed quite a bit from the last time that we've reported to you, and I have Mr. Ken Baker here, who is our Department of Public Works Director, that will give you a more updated and detailed report, particularly with some of the information from the Department of Environmental Quality.
Good evening. Ken Baker, Department of Public Works Director. What I have before you tonight is an update on the work that we've been working with, trying to move forward this well number nine that we've been working on for a long time. We met with the DEQ, and we, from the last meeting, we gave you an update on our progression. We met with the DEQ and came up and said, okay, this is the direction we want to go, this is what we want to do. And they met with us and said, you know, have you even thought about this other idea, which is maybe just going to a smaller diameter well, because of the collapsing issue and the cost of stainless steel screen, the most money, you know, the most applicable way to drill a well, get the water you need to get without having to spend a whole lot more money and abandon one well you've already drilled? One well's already in place, which is the one, that 10-inch well that's collapsed already. We already had that retested, which would produce 225 gallons a minute, as it stands. The option that came back from the DEQ, which, after we met with the hydrogeologist, our city engineer, and the DEQ, and their hydrogeologist, which you can see in our correspondence with them, the direction they recommended was drill an additional smaller well, 8-inch diameter well, case off the area where we've been having the cave-ins. That way, we can get another 125 to 250 gallons a minute from the lower formation. That way, we can use water from the upper formation and the lower formation. And between the two wells, we're going to end up with more water than what we would have got out of just one well. And less money, because then we don't have to put in a stainless steel screen to case off the area where we're having the cave-ins at. So after lots of going back and forth with them, we thought, again, we sat down with our hydrogeologist, the city engineer, and the DEQ, and we all came up and said, you know, that's not a bad idea, let's see if we can move forward with it. So that's what I'm bringing in front of you tonight, is the recommendation to move forward with drilling a smaller diameter well, casing it off where the area where we're having the cave-in, and that way, we can get water from the lower formation, from the new well that we want to put in, and still be able to retain the well that we have out there already that has a cave-in, and pull water from both wells. At that point, I'll answer questions if you have.
Any questions for Mr. Baker?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Clark.
You said that by doing this, we're going to actually have more production than what we would have gotten originally?
Yes. Why that is, when I say originally, if we'd have drilled that well and the formation stayed open, we are shooting for 350, 400 gallons a minute. That was our goal, that we were hoping to get that out of that well. When it caved in at 270 feet, we're only now pulling from the formation. We've lost the production from the lower formation, okay? So we're only going to get 200 to 225 gallons a minute out of that well. I actually already been re-permitted from that from the DEQ. So we've lost the opportunity to get to the lower formation. Now, if we wanted to get water out of that lower formation, which was our original idea, which is to drill a larger diameter well, case off the area where it's caving in, and try to pull water from the upper and lower from one well, the issue with that is the cost of putting in a stainless steel screen is thousands and thousands of dollars to do that. Now, would we want to spend 30, 40, 50, 60,000 dollars on top of the cost of drilling a well, a larger diameter well, and then having to abandon the well that we already have out there? Or would the economical way to go would be is to drill this smaller diameter well, case it off, which is, 8-inch well is half the cost or a third of the cost of drilling a 24-inch well or 12-inch well. And then stainless steel screen is, I think it's about $3,000 for a 10-foot section of stainless steel screen. And where we'd have to, we'd have to case off about 100 foot to go from the bottom for it to stand up and case off the area where the cave-in's going on. So the idea of constructing the well this way, to me, and to the staff, and to the city engineer, and the DEQ, all agreed this was the direction that would get us the most bang for our buck. Meaning that by pulling, getting that 150 to 200 gallons a minute from the bottom, plus still getting that 225 from the upper, we'd be at 400-plus between the two. So that would have been, instead of saying, okay, at this point forward, if we wanted to try to get that much water, we'd have to drill a whole new well, put in stainless steel screen to try to hold the formation open, to get that 425, 450 gallons a minute, originally what we were trying to pour originally. Hopefully, that answered your question.
I'm just trying to visualize how that will work. You've got an 8-inch well.
And it opens up into, at the top part is what? So basically, are you filling from the bottom and drawing off the top?
No, we're going to set a pump at that 270 feet, and we're going to be pulling water from the lower formation. It's going to be cased off to keep the rock from caving in and filling in the well. We're only going to be pulling from the lower formation from the smaller diameter well. And then the other well that's already there right now, and it's already permitted, that's caved in at 270 feet, this is a different well. We're talking a different well. This well is already caved in. We're going to be setting a well, a pump in that well, that's going to be shallower, and we're only going to be pulling from the upper formation from that well.
So we're actually, so we're not pulling from, we're pulling from two wells?
Correct.
That's how we do that. Didn't we run into some problems with the Park Street well because it was so shallow?
Totally different format, totally different well. This well was only 40, 50?
54.
54 feet deep. Thanks, Lance. 54 feet deep. That's really shallow. This well that's there right now, that we originally started with, it's cased off to 90 feet, so it's already cemented off 90 feet down in the ground. So basically, we're going to pull from 90 down to 270 to get water from the upper formation. And then this other well that we're going to try to case off, or we will case off, the area that's giving us the issue, is going to be cased off down to 270 feet. So from the Michigan bedrock aquifer down to the 400-feet range is where we're going to pull in that other 100, or 250 gallons a minute, 225 estimated, from the lower formation. Again, we sat down and talked with the DEQ about this, and it seemed like a good idea.
Councilmember Mulvaney?
How does the investment in this plan compare with simply moving to an entirely different formation with a new well? And get away from the problematic formation that we're in?
This would be definitely the lesser cost, because we're already at the point where we have a well in the ground that's already there. We have a raw water main brought to the site that's already there. And we're fully invested in this. Moving forward right now, this is the most economical way for us to salvage this direction. In the future, we maybe need to look at a different direction, either going north or in another area away from where this formation is that we're in.
So what's your estimate of the cost of the plan?
I do not have a cost. Basically, tonight is asking, or coming to you saying, here's the direction we want to go, because when I was in front of you before, the idea was that we're going to drill a larger diameter well and put a stainless steel casing in, and we thought that that would be an economical way to move forward. But after good conversation with the DEQ, and our geologist, and the DEQ, and they said, really, why are you going to spend all that money? And you're going to have to abandon the well that you already have there? Why not use what you have, case off the area where you're given the problem, and just get your additional water that you want to get out of the site from the lower formation? Honestly, we both, we all sat in a room, looked, and went, well, I never thought about that. Because in municipal work, you usually go big or go home. I mean, that's normally when you deal with municipal work, because you're dealing with large flows and larger gallons per minute you're dealing with. And I thought, you know what, this is a direction where it was brought to us, and I said, it seems like a good idea. So that's why I'm bringing it to you.
Mr. Mayor? One second. Administrator Colburn?
In regard to the budget, we believe it will stay within the original budget. This is funded through the LDFAs, and I believe it was 625,000. And in terms of this particular breakoff, we don't have the, you know, estimated numbers yet, but in the overall picture, we believe we'll be able to still stay within budget.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn. Councilmember Bruno?
Ken, we abandoned the Curtis Street well because that only produced 270 gallons a minute. And we determined that it was not cost-effective due to operation and maintenance expenses to maintain a well that was only producing 270 gallons a minute. And now we're looking at two with a combined capacity of 450. It just doesn't seem real economical that we would want to take a reduced capacity on these when we're talking between two, 250, with a combined total of 450 between two. Somewhere, I realize, yes, we're committed, because we already spent the money to put a water main there, I guess before we were fully cognizant of what was going on and what we might expect. But overall, to take now two wells that were less than what we abandoned one for, just doesn't make a lot of sense economically to me. Jim's idea, and probably we rarely will ever agree, that maybe this is the time to look at a different area, eat what we've done, and move on.
I understand your concern. I do, but...
Mr. Colburn?
The primary reason that we walked away from Curtis Street is the underground influence of pollution from Americhem. There was a known gradient and movement of the pollution, as documented by DEQ, that threatened, and we didn't want to take the risk. That was the primary reason why we shut that well down.
From my remembrance of this, the movement of groundwater in that area was actually away from the Curtis Street well, and that also we had sufficient overbearing clay and sufficient material to prevent the contamination. It was just an easier way, rather than probably putting forth the paperwork and arguing the discussion. But from my comments from Mr. Link, that it really should not have been an issue.
I truly understand your concerns, Mr. Bruno. I believe that this, the rock in that form, in the formation of the rock in that area, we believe we were going to get the same as we would have got from well eight and well seven, which were 350, 400 gallons a minute. That was the idea that we were going to get out of that site. We ran into this issue, that's why it's taken us so long. We're trying to find the best way to try to salvage this site. We don't want to waste taxpayer money. We want to try to, we've got this much invested into this site. I don't believe it's a bad idea, the idea that I'm bringing before you tonight, otherwise I wouldn't bring it to you. Now, it's absolutely your decision to agree or disagree with me, but I want to bring every fact in front of you, and that's why we spent the time we did. We sat down with the hydrogeologist, we sat down with the state, we sat down with our engineer, and we brought up this recommendation. I think when we're all done, we're going to have a well site, either one or two wells, but we're going to have a well site that's going to give us 400 to 450 gallons a minute when we're done. Our original goal was to get a well site that we were going to get, 400 to 450 would be great. If things didn't turn out, we would have got 300 or 200. So to try to salvage this and get as much money, an 8-inch diameter well is a whole lot less money to drill than a 12- or a 15-inch diameter well. And then if you have to put stainless steel casing in to hold the formation open, we're talking 30, 40, 50,000 dollars on top of that, to case off that area. So again, my recommendation to you is for us to put this smaller diameter well, for us to get 450, 425, 450. I can't guarantee what the water's going to yield. All I can tell you is this is a recommendation from our hydrogeologist, and the city engineer, and the DEQ. And it isn't very often that the DEQ, city engineer, and hydrogeologist all get along or even agree. So again, I can bring to you my recommendation. It's up to you to make the decision if you agree, or what direction you want us to go in, but I think it's a good direction, otherwise I wouldn't have brought it in front of you.
Ken, what's the distance between the proposed well number nine B from well number nine A?
We're probably going to be like 60 feet away from it.
60 feet?
Yep.
Is there any cost involved for additional structures, connectivity?
It would just be the piece of raw water main that's going to go from that 60 feet to the raw water main, or actually, the join-in point where the two wells are going to come together. Because we're going to bring them both together into one structure and run them to one meter.
And is that how you, just for detail orientation, is that how you would refer to it as two half-wells, per se? Or...
We were just calling them nine, well nine and well nine A. That's what we call the two, or you can call it nine B, but there's two wells going to be on that site. That's the direction that we're...
If I recall, we have the cost. You provide us with the cost of repairing well number nine with the stainless steel shield already.
I don't have that sitting in front of me.
To do that, to complete it the right way, given the circumstances of the collapse? I mean, one thing we could consider is, if we had that cost, going out to bid for the 8-inch well doesn't necessarily commit us to accepting a bid, but we then have the cost of that well versus the cost of completing the original well number nine at 12-inch diameter, I believe it was?
12-inch, yes. That's what we talked about. Actually, we were doing a larger diameter than that to open it up so we can put a 12-inch casing down and then go inside that with a screen. Yes.
Okay. So that could be an option. Councilmember Mulvaney?
I just want to say, Ken, I trust your information, and you've done a lot of research on it, and I understand that. I guess, maybe I just remain frustrated, because we drill wells and get 500 gallons a minute, and it's just, it's a new era, it's tough getting water.
I can tell you... I can tell you, your frustration is felt with staff. I mean, we have been working diligently, trying to move this project forward, and it seems like every time we try to move forward, something happens. We've looked at lots of different avenues, trying to get this project completed within the budget that we have, with the monies that were allotted to us to make this project work.
Councilmember Mulvaney?
Well, what you just said somewhat bothers me, that we don't want to do the wrong thing just because we want to stay within budget on it. And that's why, that's why I'm saying, we really do need to look at the possibilities. We're just in the wrong formation, so maybe we need to give up and move elsewhere. And just, you know, I hope you guys are giving that, you know, looking at it in that vein a little bit.
Well, the question on that would be, starting at the drawing board and starting all over again, the question from that was, what direction would you go? I mean, our wells on the south side of town average 350 to 400 gallons a minute pretty regularly, or pretty consistently, which would be well seven, well eight. And well, this well is supposed to be at that, but it didn't happen because of we're having that, the caving, the crumbling rock formation that we're running into. You could probably go in another direction to try to find another spot. And not sure that we won't run into the same issue in another part of town.
Well, we, it seems like at one time, we had a water study done, and maybe Mr. Whipple can remember about when we had that done, but it was sometime back in the early 90s. And we were directed that the best way to go to get water for Mason is south and east. And we put a lot of stake in that information, and it may be wrong. And, you know, there's, I don't know if we've ever had any other test wells in the northern part of the city or the eastern part of the city, but because we got the entire water, the water pickup system in all around the city, it seemed like we could go elsewhere and look for wells. We're not really locked in to the south and easterly quarter of the city.
We actually did do a test well on the north section of town off of Columbia Road. It's been probably 10 years ago, and it didn't, it didn't turn out well.
No, that was on the west side, you mean on the Emmens Farm?
Yes, it was on West Columbia, just on the side of Summerwood subdivision.
Yeah, but that's, that's still southern, southern part of the city as compared, you know. Where were we with the Howell Street well when we took it out of service? How many, what was the gallons-per-minute flow on that one?
350. And it's got, in years past, we had brine issues. There's contamination issues on the north side with, between the salt brine stuff and then also the Merakim.
Well, the salt brine issue was very specific to county storage of salt there. And so we, in fact, they took care of that issue by drilling us a brand-new well, but that was a very close environmental problem. It doesn't mean that all wells on the north side of the city would be salt wells.
Ken?
Yes, sir.
Going back to the concept of two wells, do you, do you have, at this point, a fairly good estimate of the cost to continue with this well, with well number nine?
For, what are you saying, to complete the well?
With going to the larger bore and putting in the 12-inch stainless steel screen and...
Do I have a number what that's going to cost?
Yes.
Not with me tonight, no.
Okay.
I know we, I got a whole file folder that's this thick on all the stuff, the different options that we've looked at, but I don't have that sitting in front of me, but it would definitely overrun the project.
All right. I understand what you're looking for tonight is a direction to go ahead and secure bids, go out to bid for drilling the second well 60 feet away. But before, if that happens, but before going further with that concept, now we have two wells, maintenance of two wells, a council sitting here 10 years from now might be looking at, you know, cost to rehab two wells versus one. So this does potentially introduce some costs down the road that could be avoided if we continue on with just one well. Something to think about. And so I would like to see that number in comparison with the bids that would come in from drilling the second well, and then make a decision. That would seem like a logical approach, kind of like what, going along with what you said, if you go in big and do it the right way. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bruno?
Based on that, why don't we table this? Do we get better information and make a determination then?
Well, what we could do, as an alternative to tabling it, was, is go ahead and authorize getting the bids, so that those bids are in, coming in, but no action is taken on those bids until we review those bids alongside of the repair costs. Because that would save some time. I know he's probably looking at timing here.
I can write specifications to bid the project out both ways. We can say, option one would be drilling a small diameter well and equipping it, or excuse me, equipping, but just drilling the well and doing a pump test. And then the option B would be a larger diameter well and put in stainless steel screen and do exactly what you're asking me to do. I can bid project both ways and get the information come back to you. But understand, if it comes back with a larger number, it's going to overrun our budget.
And as Councilmember Mulvaney alluded to, if that's a decision that we have to be faced with, we could look at it at that time. And to you, Councilmember Bruno, I would just say, that gets us the same end result as tabling it, it just gets us results faster. Any other questions for Mr. Baker? Thank you, Ken.
Yep, thank you.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Point of inquiry.
Mayor Proton Brown?
To Councilmember Bruno, did you actually make a motion to table, or was it a suggestion?
I made a motion, but it's... I took it as just a, why don't we?
Okay.
So, but...
Fine, it's only a discussion.
Pardon?
Excuse me, it was only a discussion item anyway, so we're...
On the agenda, yes.
Yeah, we continue to discuss, I guess.
But the recommended action on the SAR does suggest a motion would be appropriate. So if there's no motion...
I'll make a statement.
I would think that would be good to move forward. Mayor Proton Brown?
For discussion purposes, I would move that we authorize the Public Works Director to go out to bid for both options as presented in our discussion tonight.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded to direct the Public Works Director to go out and bid repair of the original well and drilling of the second small diameter well. Paraphrase that a little bit, but is there any discussion on that motion? Councilmember Mulvaney?
Does this mean we're going to disregard any option of any other course, such as examining new test wells, et cetera?
At this point, yes, it would just be to direct staff to come back with those numbers, and we'll review it when they are in. It does not include a test well in another location. And understandably, the infrastructure is there to that location. So we do have significant investment at this point to that location that we would also be discarding if we walked away from it.
I just have a simple question. Is there, can anybody think of any advantage to tabling this versus going out to bid in both directions?
Thought I was going to sneeze. Apologize for that. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. All those oppose?
No.
Two. Motion passes five-two. Mr. Baker, does that give you what you need? Oh, there you are, to go forward. Are there any questions on what we're...
I believe, understand what you want me to do, is to put together bid specs, bid out the two options that you, what we talked about this evening, and then I'll bring those back to you with a breakdown of what the two bids came in at.
Okay.
That's what I can do.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Item E is a discussion on collection of trash in downtown business district, and I'm assuming this will be a report on an issue that was brought up at the previous council meeting. Mr. Colburn?
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, staff has proceeded forward to review the situation, have discussions with the DDA chairperson, and at this point, I'll call them up to give you a report of the discussions and processes that we are looking at discussing and proceeding forward. So we have Mr. Ken Baker, DPW Director, Mr. Tom Sillsby, who is our Superintendent of Streets and Water.
Welcome back, Ken.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sillsby, I'm going to let him speak to this issue. Him and I have been meeting with Mark Howell from the DDA, and I've talked with Debbie about this as well. I'll let, I'll let Tom come up and speak to it. I just want to be here in support of him. I feel it's my role to do that, so.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tom Sillsby, Director, not Director, Superintendent of Public Works. We met with the Chairperson of the DDA, Mr. Mark Howell. We had a good meeting with him. It was decided that we would make contact with the businesses where there was the troubled areas that were trashes, is a problem, and ask them to be reminded that they're, they have specific language in their license for doing business on the inner sidewalk, that they provide trash for their businesses and their patrons. The Department of Public Works has traditionally collected trash on Monday and Friday, and at this point, we don't see any reason to change that. So that's pretty much where we stand.
Thank you, Mr. Sillsby. Any questions? Mayor Proton Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Given that the policy of the city is to collect trash on Mondays and Fridays, what is done when there are special events that could cause a greater amount of trash in the downtown area? So if we have a festival, if we have a parade or something that occurs, you know, on a Saturday, and the trash won't be picked up till Monday, do we just have full receptacles throughout the weekend?
Unless there is a special request, or unless there's a specific direction to the special event to collect trash on their own, we would, we would collect trash on Monday and Friday, unless there was a specific problem where we call in staff on a special occasion to do that.
And in terms of notifying the businesses, in terms of their responsibilities, if a public trash can is overflowing, then is it, are you saying that it is the responsibility of the business owner to rectify that situation, or they are to provide alternative means of disposing?
No. The public trash can is the public's responsibility, or the Public Works' responsibility. What we would like to do is remind the business owners that are licensed for doing business on the sidewalks, such as serving food and the trash resulting from that, that they provide trash cans from their own business, and they police those trash cans accordingly. And it specifically says that in their license.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Unfinished business, Councilmember Drosha.
Well, I have a question. I'm not exactly sure where this falls. If we're going to take any action on the proposal from Mr. Whipple this evening, does that fall under new business or unfinished business? Because it's part of the budget, which is unfinished. So...
I would recommend unfinished business.
Okay.
However, we don't have anything to review at this point. That's been my concern, is we have, we have, we're under a timeline. We have to have this budget approved by law at the next council meeting, so we basically have two weeks to obtain as information, review it, let Eric crunch the numbers, and that might drive another budget work session to take a look at that. So that's probably where we would be at with it, but the first step would be obtaining it. And Russ did say he would provide a copy, and we can get that out as quickly as possible to go from there.
In that case, I have no unfinished business.
Thank you, Councilmember Drosha. Councilmember Mulvaney?
None.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Just thought of something related to Councilmember Drosha's question. And that would simply be that even if we are unable to look at the request in the interim of two weeks and get it in the budget by May 18th, we can certainly amend the budget at any point. So I guess the way I see it is that I'm very interested in looking at the proposal from Mr. Whipple, and it could, we could either look at the budget as it is currently presented and amended on the floor with a proposal, or we could come back at a later time and amend the budget to further that proposal. So I guess I see it in that regard if we aren't able to do anything in the interim. And I think, I think my preference might be to look at it a little bit after and come back with a budget amendment, which would not be inappropriate. Other than that, I have no other unfinished business.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Councilmember Ferris?
None.
Councilmember Clark?
None.
Councilmember Bruno?
None.
For me, I saw yet another option, is we have already established our budget, which results in a 30, roughly a 32% fund balance. And to evaluate and splice in Mr. Whipple's proposal, which we haven't seen yet, but I have every reason to believe it's fairly comprehensive, having worked with him in years past, that we could always continue on in the direction we were going for the first apparatus at least, if not the second, but then factor in the suggestions and the financing proposal that he's laying out for us to continue on. As it was every intention and my participation in the budget hearings, that this be an ongoing, self-sustainable process, that we do end up with a plan, long-term indefinite plan, to continually upgrade the fire apparatus, so that the surprises that have been mentioned by numerous councilmembers and former councilmembers in the audience, that these trucks just seem to get purchased all of a sudden at the last minute when they're absolutely necessary, so that is eliminated and doesn't happen anymore. So that's another option, is we could splice together the work we've done with the work that Russ has done. And that's the only unfinished business I have. New business, Councilmember Drosha?
None.
Councilmember Mulvaney?
None.
Mayor Proton Brown?
I have no new business.
Councilmember Ferris?
None.
Councilmember Clark?
None.
Councilmember Bruno?
None.
The one item I have under new business, Mr. Colburn, you had disseminated a brief letter responding to concerns of oil well drilling derricks showing up on city lots. Appreciate the efforts, the quick efforts that you did to put together a meeting and get the information that you were able to provide to us. Has there been anything new along those lines since the April 23rd letter?
Just a little. Bottom line is that there was some concerns expressed in regard to people going door-to-door and trying to acquire some mineral rights. Basically, two different actions... different actions were taken here in regard to the particular company getting a right-of-way permit, as well as a peddler's permit, which they've done both items as required by city ordinance. At this date, they are not suggesting drilling inside the city limits with oil derrick-style approaches. They are just truly going door-to-door at this point, knocking on doors, trying to garner information and mineral rights so that they can build their business plan. So to date, staff has no knowledge that they're doing anything inappropriate or illegal. As a matter of fact, quite the opposite, they've come to the city and gotten their permits. After putting that portion together, I forwarded it to the city attorney in regard to a legal review to take a look at some of the more far-reaching discussions of oil and gas and natural resource law. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hitch, the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn. At this point, I can say that my research is not complete. What I have reviewed, however, indicates that what is being done now, really going, seeking the leases, is, there's no violation of any ordinance. I concur in the opinion of staff that what's going on, once the permits were obtained, is within the laws of the City of Mason, and as it pertains to other issues that might come about, I have no particular opinion at this time. I can say that my research of Michigan law so far has not given me any particular guidance. There's no case law on horizontal drilling. The statutes don't specifically relate to that or directional drilling in that regard. So at this point, there's no clear guidance on where these things might lead.
Thank you, Mr. Hitch. I did an analysis of our ordinances in response to a number of citizen concerns that that's exactly what would happen. There would be an oil well next door to somebody. And we have Chapter 38, Natural Resources. When you get a chance, could you study that and report back to us? From the surface, it appears that we, we have a defensible stance if we do not want that to happen. Section 38-35 subsection 8 starts with "It shall be unlawful for any person to drill, explore, explore or commence to drill any will for oil, gas, petroleum, et cetera, et cetera, within the corporate limits of the city." It also gives city council considerable authority over whether that could even happen. For instance, prior to a well being drilled, the applicant would have to apply to the city council for permission, and upon receipt of the completed application, the city council may elect to hold a public hearing, which would likely be the case. And under the same, section 38-35 subsection C3 starts with "The city council shall have the power and reserves the authority to refuse any application for a permit where, by reason of the location of the proposed well." And it does give some criteria for refusing a permit, but it also includes in that whether it creates a hazard, endangers the health, safety, welfare, residents, or otherwise be destructive of property interests. The catch, however, that I saw in going through this is that the city appears to have that authority, but the Zoning Enabling Act of 2006 removed that authority from the township. So other than having jurisdiction of what's within our corporate city limits, across the road from our corporate city limits, such an enterprise could take place. And I think that's what's of concern to some of the residents.
And I understand that. And I too reviewed the ordinance and specifically was trying to determine whether an ordinance that was drafted and, and basically went into effect in the early 70s, given 1970s technology, would necessarily be conclusive as to 2015, 21st century technology. And that's what I, where I've been trying to focus on my research. I think that it's probably fair to say that when that ordinance was originally drafted, the concern was oil rigs next door. The ordinance, taken as a whole, looks at issues of fencing and structures and equipment that would be consistent with surface wells and surface structures. And it's at least not clear to me that something that would not include those sorts of characteristics, if you would, of the drilling procedure, that our ordinance would automatically apply. And so that's what I'm trying to get some, some feel, because it, the way the ordinance is drafted, it does facilitate the drilling of oil wells within the city. You meet certain requirements, and you're entitled to drill wells, the ordinance even provides in residential zones. There are areas where certain procedures must be undertaken, that if it is in a residential zone. So the, the focus of my analysis was that we, I'm trying to determine whether this ordinance would viably withstand a legal challenge by a company who's invested, who may have invested significant funds, and as you point out, having done all the drilling with the surface structures, the equipment in Allerton, Viva, whatever, one of the surrounding townships, fully meeting the requirements of the state, whether the city's ordinance, as it presently sits and is written, would be viable. And so that was where I'm going. I'm not saying that there aren't issues, there clearly are, but that's been the focus of my investigation as up to this point.
Understood, and appreciate that. It looks like it was fairly well-written to try to protect the interest, as they may be, within the city. As far as wells in town, section 38-36 states that no well could be, even if it's approved, located within 330 feet of an adjacent property line, which would pretty much preclude any city lot. But your point is, is also the point I'd like to make. Is this up to date? Is it, is it something that's defensible if necessary? And what are, thirdly, what are options with the townships? I did go through, just, I took Viva's ordinances and went through, there is absolutely no reference to regulating an oil well. They're referenced in there, but there's, again, the zoning enabling act has pretty much removed that authority anyway. So that's our catch, is what happens outside the border.
And I think that's a fair concern, but the state legislature, just as you've indicated and as I had reviewed, is quite explicit. County regulations and township regulations are no longer applicable in this, in this regulatory scheme. So whether, Viva did have language that predated the 2006 amendment, it's now initiated, it has no force of effect.
Right. Shelby Township in Michigan is well aware of that with their 40-some-plus oil wells in residential neighborhoods. So I guess if, if nobody has any objections, I would like to task you with that sooner than later.
Sure.
And let us know where we stand, perhaps as soon as the next council meeting, if that's feasible.
I will.
I will work on that, as I indicated to Mr. Colburn. I had been doing some research on this and have been doing some research, and I was surprised, frankly, on how little there is. There've been some recent ordinances in Rochester, New York. There's been a lot more activity in Pennsylvania, because I think people are aware of the Marcellus Formation in New York and Pennsylvania. That's had a lot of activity. But I'm going to be seeking, seeking out other city attorneys and other communities that might have had some recent ordinances, because as I've indicated, there's no court decisions that are reported. So we're seemingly starting with a little bit of a blank slate. So that's where my research so far has taken me.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Hitch.
You're more than welcome.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Just while we're on that subject, I think you mentioned Shelby Township, but I think there are a couple of communities in Macomb County that have been dealing with this in terms of this specific company, I believe, West Bay. So we may want to look and see what some of those communities have done. And then just also for, for the public to know, I've been in consultation with State Representative Tom Cochran. They've been getting phone calls. His office has been receiving phone calls about this as well. And he's looking to put together a town hall meeting, a public forum, just where people can come and ask questions. And he was looking to get input, not only from the city level, but county officials, state officials, especially DEQ, DNR type, type of personnel as well, just to offer insight into what has occurred in the past, what can and cannot be done, that sort of thing. So a date has not been established, and once I hear one, I'll be sure to publicize at a council meeting, but stay tuned. There definitely is some, some interest at the, at the state legislative level from our own state representative.
Councilmember Mulvaney?
Just like to ask a council on a question, if they arrive at my door and offer me a cash 10-year lease in my end, anyway obligated to, to give them a lease.
You're surely not obligated to give anyone a lease. I mean, that's...
They would have, if I refuse to sign a lease, they have no recourse.
That would be correct. I mean, this is just like any other commercial transaction that takes, in the vernacular, two to tango. And there's no obligation on anyone's part to accept a lease. And they're not obligated to offer leases. So it would be whatever the parties could agree to, if they could reach an agreement. But neither party would be under any compulsion to agree to any sort of a lease.
Mr. Hitch, if you look into one other thing, I also ran across a process called pooling. And that's where, if a number of Councilmember Mulvanys were all living next door to each other, and they did hold out, an entity could come along and force them to pool and throw in for giving up their mineral rights. And in some cases, it seemed that that deal was even more lucrative than going door-to-door. But it was unclear who was the authority behind mandating the pooling. So that's something that's, that's new as well.
Yes, it, yes, it is. When they arrive at your door and offer you a lease, you begin to think about that a little bit, because, because, and there's a lot of variation in what they'll offer one resident compared to the resident next door to them.
Interesting. Be nice to have a water well.
Some potential, if they drilled an oil well in the city limits, 285 feet deep, would it make a water well?
On that note, Councilmember reports. Any councilmembers have a report this evening? I have one. I'll make it brief, due to the time that the meeting has gone on. Through, through leap, I had an invitation to attend a fundraiser for the Lansing Promise Scholarship, formerly Lansing Hope Scholarship. And I had the good fortune to sit at a VIP table that had an hour behind the scenes with our old pal, Magic Johnson. That guy is tall, but effective. He was instrumental in raising, as you probably heard through the media, over a million dollars for Lansing school kids, that to have the opportunity to attend college that otherwise would not. So it was a very interesting evening. That's all.
Administrators report. What, hang on, liaison reports. Actually, start with the tree commission, because I know you had some events this time.
We planted a tree honoring Dennis O'Brien just inside the cemetery to the right. You can go see it. If we get a dry spell this summer, please put a five-gallon can of water on it. And we hope to do more trees in the fall for the Legacy Tree Program. The form is online. Please feel free to add a tree to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ferris. Traffic, Councilmember Drosha?
Traffic met last Wednesday. Everybody was present, and there were four items that got discussed briefly, were attended to. One is pavement markings on East Ash and Cedar as you're heading eastbound on Ash Street. There was a question as to whether or not that was one lane or two lanes. It is indeed one lane. And briefly discussed whether or not that should be two lanes, and decided against that because of the parking next to Ace Harbor. Second was pavement markings on State Street onto Columbia, similar sort of situation where we decided that ought to be left alone. The tree canopy on Hall Boulevard has sometimes, has been brought up as an issue, but at that time, we couldn't really discuss it because the leaves weren't out, and so there was no canopy. So there's nothing to see there. And then finally, the little stop sign where the Riverwalk crosses State Street, we've determined that needs to be removed, because people are confusing it for a real stop sign, stopping. And people that know the area don't stop, and that could be a traffic hazard. So that will disappear at some point.
Thank you, Councilmember Drosha. With any good fortune, if this weather holds, that tree canopy might be an issue on Hall Boulevard. Planning Commission, Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I reported on our last meeting, I reported on the planning commission's activities at the last meeting, but I did happen to bring with me tonight, for any councilmember that wants to take a look, I have the full site plans for the Dart Bank, the new Dart Bank headquarters. They're very comprehensive and very interesting as well. And so given that the rezoning was on our agenda tonight, I wanted to bring those for any councilmember to take a look at. Planning Commission will meet again next Tuesday here at City Hall at 6:30 PM.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Historic District Commission, Councilmember Mulvaney?
No, we have a meeting scheduled for 6:30 on May 27th to consider a petition for developing a part of the downtown district on Ash Street. And so anybody interested, welcome to come, May 27th.
Thank you, Councilmember Mulvaney. And lastly, but certainly not least, the DDA will meet next Wednesday, have a report at the next council meeting. Administrators report. Mr. Colburn?
A few things. The street programs are well underway. Lansing Street, we've placed the waterline in, and it's going in along Washington Street, those two blocks. Maple Street has tore up from Lawton over to Temple Street. So all those projects are moving along. Had a CARTS meeting yesterday in which we discussed the letting of the projects. The Cedar Street project of ours is in the July letting. The concern that was expressed is we couldn't find the KIP letting, and so the county is working at the MDOT to try to figure out what's going on with that. So things are progressing forward. Also, we're talking to Dart Bank in regard to during their construction period parking and how that'll influence the downtown area. They're being very proactive. We appreciate that. And also with the election, as the stake turned out around 20%, I wanted to point out that the city turned out to 25.5%. And I wanted to thank Deb for sharing those numbers with me, as well as the fact that the citizens got out and voted at least 25.5% of them. But that's well above... But that's well above the state average.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn.
Mr. Colburn, I think there are right people here to answer this question. But I just have a concern with the street breakup on West Columbia Street near Walnut Street. And has that been looked at? Can we get a reasonable fix out of that?
It has been looked at. It's a problematic area, I believe initiated by consumers. And so, it's, we're taking it back to see if there's any way to get them to work on that. But candidly, I doubt it because of the amount of time that's gone by. But that's, you know, they've had to cut in into that area. So, that is on our radar.
Any other questions for Mr. Colburn? That concludes our meeting. We are adjourned.